The Tuesday, May 7th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. Before we start things off tonight, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic events regarding the disappearance of Mandy Matula. We're all deeply saddened by these events and our heart goes out to the Matula family and the entire community. Mandy was last seen by family at about 11:00 PM last Wednesday and failed to show up for work Thursday morning. Police believe she was last seen with David Rowe. During the course of the investigation, police identified David as a person of interest and he agreed to speak with an investigator. However, upon arrival at the police station, he used a gun to take his own life. Our thoughts are also with David's family and friends as they grieve this terrible loss. To bring matters even closer to home, Mandy has been a seasonal park maintenance employee with the city of Eden Prairie since 2007, and David was employed at Eden Prairie Liquor. Mandy's brother, Stephen Matula, is a mechanic in the Fleet's Division. Steve has been absolutely amazing in working with police and leading the effort of the community to find Mandy. As these events have unfolded, I've been deeply moved by the outpouring of support from the Matula family, for the Matula family, from the entire Eden Prairie community. I've witnessed literally hundreds of people volunteering to search and do whatever they can to bring resolution to this very difficult situation. Between the remarkable community response and the extraordinary efforts of our police and fire departments, our community emergency response team, and many other city staff, I feel truly humbled to be part of such an exceptional community. For those who are willing to join the search or show your support for the Matula family, a Finding Mandy Matula Facebook group has been established. Donations for the Matula family can also be made to the Mandy Matula Fund. Details about that are available on the Finding Mandy Matula Facebook page. Residents may also visit edinprairie.org/missingperson to keep informed of the latest developments from our police department. Our hearts are heavy, but I would like the entire community to know that all of us here at the city stand with you and are committed to doing everything possible to bring Mandy home. And now with Mandy and our thoughts and prayers, I'd like us to observe a moment of silence. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, which is generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for residents to address the council on a very informal, impromptu manner. This time period is between approximately 6:30 and 7:00 in the council chambers, and if you're interested in addressing the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412, at least by noon of the meeting date, so that we can make sure that we have the right people here to address any questions that you might have. If you need to leave a message, make sure you leave your name, your phone number, and the subject you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are through, we have an opportunity for unscheduled speakers to address the council. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about this portion of the meeting, again, please contact the city manager's office. We have a set of three proclamations or presentations tonight, and the first is a Senior Awareness Month proclamation, and I'd like to ask members of the Senior Advisory Council to come up to the podium there, and I will come down and we'll read the proclamation. Whereas the increasing number of senior citizens in Eden Prairie create many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government, and whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our senior citizens, and awareness improves participation and action, and whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom which will impact our future, and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older adults, and where a Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim May 2013 to be Senior Awareness Month, adopted on this day, the 7th day of May 2013. Congratulations.
You too.
Thank you.
And does one of you going to speak?
I will.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? And can you maybe address the council then?
Okay. These are the members of the Senior Advisory Council, and during Senior Awareness Month, we have 20 activities, classes, events scheduled, half of which are free, and it's a collaboration of the Eden Prairie Senior Center, the Police and Fire Department, the Eden Prairie Library, and some of the senior residents to put on this month-long event. I have schedules, whoops, sorry about that, schedules like this out on the table there. You can also call the Eden Prairie Senior Center or visit to find schedules. Events are also published weekly in the Eden Prairie newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do for the senior community.
Before I go back up to the podium, or the days up there, I'd like to introduce the next speaker. We have our police chief, Rob Reynolds, who has a special commendation to give out tonight. Chief Reynolds?
Your honor and members of the council, we've come before you many times, and we've said over and over again that there's no way we could do our job without the help of the people that live, work, and in this case, actually just pass through our community. Normally, you know, we ask these people to do certain things like obey traffic laws, to lock your doors, to call in suspicious activity, and things like that, but once in a while, people will do things that go way, way above and beyond what we would ask them to do to help us, you know, provide a safe community, and they actually put themselves in harm's way to help us out. So tonight, I would like to give an accommodation to Mr. Richard Lane III for such actions. The accommodation, before we start, accommodation is an award by the police chief, the police chief, to a department personnel or citizen for excellent or unusual accomplishments or actions as acknowledged by other officers, their supervisors, or concerned citizens. What I'd like to do now is read the award. Eden Prairie Police Department, May 7th, 2013. To Richard Lane III, a police commendation. On January 30th, 2013, an Eden Prairie police officer pulled over a driver at Highway 5 and Mitchell Road. The officer was concerned that the driver might have a weapon in his pocket and reached for the man's hands. A tussle between the driver and the officer ensued. During the scuffle, the driver bit the officer's wrist. The two men were then on the ground fighting in the middle of Mitchell Road exit ramp as vehicles drove by them. The officer was able to call for help on his lapel microphone as they struggled. At this point, a passerby, Richard Lane III, stopped his vehicle in front of the officer's, approached the officer, and asked him if he needed assistance. The officer answered that he did, and Mr. Lane held the driver down while the officer handcuffed him. Other officers then began arriving to assist. Mr. Lane's role in this dangerous arrest was invaluable. While other officers, or other drivers drove past, Mr. Lane had the courage and presence to stop and offer assistance. Mr. Lane was able to lend his strength in order to help and subdue the driver. For his willingness to put himself in danger and for his quick actions in coming to the assistance of an officer in need, I hereby award this commendation to Richard Lane III on behalf of a grateful Eden Prairie Police Department.
Okay, now we have an update from Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, Chief Stanek, or Sheriff Stanek, rather.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Is there a, exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you. Oops. This one? Okay, good. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Rich Stanek, I'm the Hennepin County Sheriff. Thanks very much for having me out here tonight. With me this evening is Major Jeff Storms. Jeff commands our jail and our Court Services Bureau. Madam Mayor, members, you know, every year or so I get a chance to come out and work with the elected officials across the county. As you know, Hennepin County is a fairly big place with 1.3 million residents, 46 different cities, and 37 localized police departments, much like Eden Prairie. Your folks do a great job. I have to tell you, Madam Mayor, members, we enjoy working with Chief Reynolds and the men and women out here in Eden Prairie. They do things the right way each and every time. In fact, I had a meeting this afternoon with Chief Reynolds about, unfortunately, the Mandy Matula case, and as you said, Madam Mayor, you know, hearts and souls go out to Mandy Matula's family, who I had a chance to meet this afternoon as well, as well as David Rowe's family. Having said that, I'm also very pleased to see a number of young people in the audience here tonight. I can tell school is coming to an end, because I'm sure they've got a class assignment, you're going to help them figure that out. And then, of course, Sergeant Lane. Had a chance to meet him in the hallway, and you know, he reminds me every day that I get a chance to meet a lot of outstanding people across this county on behalf of public safety, and truly a hero. You know, at the end of the day, it's really just ordinary people that do extraordinary acts. Sergeant Lane, I think, qualifies in that category. Madam Mayor, members, I've got maybe seven, eight minutes of some comments I want to go through with some slides, just a quick overview of the sheriff's office, but more importantly, how we work hand in hand with the Eden Prairie Police Department, and we're happy to take any questions you might have. Now, that automatically went to it, so is it being controlled through this or me? Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure. Traditionally, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is a full-service law enforcement agency countywide. I told you about the dimensions of the county, a little bit of the work we do. We are eight distinct lines of business, all the way from running the jail to our 911 dispatch, patrol, crime lab, investigations, warrants, civil process. People ask me all the time, you know, Sheriff, where do you get your authority from? How do you go about doing your business? If you look under Chapter 387 under state law, it articulates seven of those eight different lines of business that we have to perform on behalf of the residents of this great county. The eighth one is our crime lab. The county board has invested in our state-of-the-art, internationally accredited crime lab to provide forensic science services to the residents of this county. I'm very pleased that violent crime in this county is down 37% over the last six years. That's a good thing for the residents of this county and Eden Prairie as a whole. If you think about it, it's tens and tens and thousands less victims of rape, robbery, murder, aggravated assault, the four worst of the worst crimes that we measured over the last six years, a 37% reduction is significant. Now, crime has gone down across the country in terms of violent crime, but not even close to these staggering numbers of a 37% decline. And really, at the end of the day, it attributes to the work that we do with our local partnerships, local law enforcement agencies, leveraging our partnerships, forensic sciences, and just a lot of good old-fashioned police work that you see countywide. Our jail is located in downtown Minneapolis, and we book anywhere from 35,000 to 40,000 people a year through the front doors. About one-third of those inmates suffer from some form of treated or untreated mental illness. It is hard to deal with them. You keep in mind that our jail in downtown Minneapolis only holds people until they're adjudicated by the court, so once they're adjudicated, they either head off to a state prison, maybe the county workhouse, maybe back out in the community on probation, but we only hold them until they're adjudicated by the courts. Last year, I think Eden Prairie PD booked about, it looks like 300 and some, I'm having a hard time seeing that from distance, 300-plus folks into the Hennepin County Jail. And of course, you've got your own holding facilities down here, so many times misdemeanor-type bookings will not make it down to the jail, but rather they're processed out here and released, which is common practice in many of the cities that have localized police departments. Enforcement Services Division out in Brooklyn Park is the headquarters out there. Again, full range of law enforcement services from our special enforcement response team, our warrant and civil units. We work countywide, serving arrest warrants as well as civil processes, whether orders for protection, restraining orders, sometimes foreclosures on businesses or residential properties. It really runs the gamut. And then, of course, our K-9 unit, we've got 11 canines that work countywide, from bomb detection dogs to bloodhound narcotics, and the ones you don't want to run into, which are the biters, the apprehension dogs. But they provide a full range of services to help out countywide. Our warrants and civil processes, I mentioned, you see, last year we served about 33,000 warrants countywide. A good portion of them are felony offenders, many of them are misdemeanors, and then we focus specifically on those who don't show up for court or violate the terms and conditions of their probation for DWI, domestic assault. We feel very strongly about that and put an increased emphasis on that. Our sheriff's office water patrol, again, we've got a big job to do with this. You've got a number of lakes out in this area. We patrol 104 lakes and three major rivers across the county. We patrol it in the summer by boat, in the winter we do it by airboat, snowmobile, ATV, whatever it takes us to get out onto the water, or the frozen water as it may be, and these guys stay awfully busy. Our sheriff's office dive team works on recovering evidence, individuals, drowning, suicides, sometimes just accidents that happen in the waterways. It doesn't matter whether it's a public pool, a hot tub in someone's backyard, a bathtub, or some other body of water, it's the sheriff's office's responsibility to work that investigation. But we also work very hard on the prevention aspect, because many of these drownings, many, 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 are young people, and they are absolutely preventable. Special Operations Unit works out of our, again, out of our headquarters out in Brooklyn Park, our Weapons and Mass Destruction Tactical Team, of which Eden Prairie is a member of, and we appreciate that, our Special Response Force, which is a highly-trained group of deputies who can respond both within our county, across the metropolitan area, statewide, or across the upper Midwest region for other sheriff's offices or local law enforcement agencies that need assistance. You may see them out in the western part of the state when they've got some catastrophic spring floods. You may see them down in Minneapolis when a tornado whips through the north side of Minneapolis, so on and so forth. And I lost that thing.
It'll come back.
Oh, it'll come back? Okay. Our investigative unit works extremely hard as well. Our information sharing and analysis unit really is the future of policing. We've said this a number of times, between our criminal information sharing and analysis unit using information and intelligence to our advantage, to our violent offender task force, which works extremely hard targeting violent offenders based on their criminal behavior. Eden Prairie Police participates in the Southwest Hennepin Crime Collaboration meetings with us. They do a great job. Our Southwest Hennepin Drug Task Force, of which Eden Prairie Police also participates, you can see some of the numbers here, from 2012, 100 firearms confiscated, 161 arrests, and 112 state charges. That's nothing short of a lot of good old-fashioned police work by the officers that work in a task force environment, so you can leverage resources amongst the communities that surround you out here in Eden Prairie, as well as Eden Prairie itself. Sheriff's Office Crime Lab, again, is state-of-the-art. There's only two of them in the state of Minnesota. The Bureau of Criminal Apprehension provides crime lab services for the other 86 counties in this state, and then the Sheriff's Office Crime Lab that provides services for the residents and law enforcement agencies in Hennepin County. And last year, we processed 119 crime lab cases out here in Eden Prairie. Personnel training, because we're the largest sheriff's office in the upper Midwest and one of the largest in the state of Minnesota, and we do a lot of training, et cetera, and if we're going to put on a class for 15 or 20 of our deputies or more, we also invite 15 or 20 of the local law enforcement officers, so we're all trained to a similar standard here in our county. There are about 2700 to 2800 police officers that work throughout Hennepin County. Eden Prairie has some. Minneapolis has about 800. We have several hundred, so on and so forth, but we want to be trained to a similar standard so that your residents and the residents of this county, when they come across a law enforcement officer, have some assurances and guarantee, number one, that we're all trained to the same standard, but two, there's some continuity in terms of what we do, and the law enforcement services should be seamless back to the residents of your city. You also, we put on an annual reserve officer school. I think Eden Prairie has two reserves this year in class, and you had four last year in 2012. We are working on a new communications facility, 911 dispatch, currently located out in Golden Valley. We're replacing this 34, we're replacing the 66-year-old facility with a $34 million facility being built in Plymouth. We expect it to be open and operational November of 2014, just a few months away. We currently dispatch for 37 cities in this county. We'll be picking up a 38th city providing services to Golden Valley December 1 of 2015, as soon as this facility opens. These are just a couple renditions, artist renditions of what that facility will look like. You know, we operate a little bit more than a 911 dispatch facility as well, so control the armor radio system countywide, so when you go out to the squad cars and you see the mobile radios in the squads or the handheld radios that the officers wear on their person, these all come through the sheriff's office. I think I left with your, one of your folks up here, perfect, our annual report, the sheriff's office, because the sheriff is elected and we work for the residents of this county, and we are funded through property tax dollars, we're transparent in terms of what we do, and if you get a chance after the meeting, of course, to read through the annual report, you get a good idea about what the sheriff's office does, what the difference is between what we do and local police or state patrol or federal law enforcement agencies, but you also get a pretty good idea about the partnerships we have that we really stress and emphasize. Lastly, next week is Law Enforcement Week across this country. We lose a number of law enforcement officers every year who die in the line of duty, either through extreme acts of violence, sometimes it crashes during the line of duty. Either way, we celebrate on Wednesday, May 15th, 11:30 to noon in Minneapolis City Hall, or the old courthouse as it's called, with a law enforcement memorial ceremony countywide, and you're welcome to join us if you get a chance. If nothing else, please don't forget that next week is Law Enforcement Week across this country, and you should herald the great work of your localized police department. That's it in terms of my prepared comments, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? I don't hear any, but thank you very much for coming out and doing this presentation and letting us know what you've been up to, and this is a great piece. I was glancing through it when it was handed out prior to the meeting, and there's lots of information in here, so thank you. Appreciate you.
Good. Madam Mayor, members, in closing then, just let me say again, we really enjoy working with Chief Reynolds, Rob. You know, I get a chance to have a cup of coffee with him every couple of months, talk to him probably more frequently than that, but he gets it. He does a great job for your city, as do the men and women who work out here. Their resources are stretched this past week, a lot of challenging times, but they're coming through and doing a very nice job, and you should be very proud of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Moved.
Second. Any items to add?
I have three items to add under reports of council members. A repeat of the Step to It Challenge, a report on our closed session from last meeting, and a thank you to Public Works, so I'd like to add those.
And Madam Mayor, I have one to add as well. On report of the Public Works Director, we have bringing forward tonight a resolution regarding a hazardous condition at a private property.
And that's?
So that's on the golden rod on your sheet, yeah, so that would be, report to Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council workshop held Tuesday, April 16th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held the same date?
So moved.
Again, any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Is there anything you'd like to pull for discussion or any questions on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is the vacation of an easement. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have tonight a easement vacation related to the Grand Haven at Marsh Cove Development. Official notice that this public hearing was published on April 18th, Eden Prairie News, and sent to 13 property owners. This issue involves one individual property over a part of Lot 4 Block 2 that's requesting a vacation of an easement to facilitate the building of a pool and a retaining wall. These were easements that are originally dedicated for this development, and the owner has submitted a revised grading plan to accommodate all the drainage on any adjoining lots, and the staff supports the vacation of this easement.
Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there any one from the audience that would like to address the council on the vacation of this easement? Okay, is there a motion?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating part of the drainage and utility easement over Lot 4 Block 2, Grand Haven at Marsh Cove, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wextrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terry Lukens.
Aye. Thank you. Reports of council members. I had three, as I mentioned. The first thing I wanted to say is now that I think winter is finally at an end, I would like to call out our Public Works Department and the wonderful job that they have done with snow removal this winter. You must have blown through that budget. I'm sure you're keeping your fingers crossed that there's no snow in November and December so that we don't have to worry about that, but I just think overall, just an excellent, excellent job this year, and we really appreciate your work. Thank you. And then I want to report on the last closed session, and our attorney prepared some remarks. At our last meeting, the city council met in closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager. The contract of the city manager requires an evaluation at this time every year. The entire city council was present, also present was the city attorney. Also, for the first part of the evaluation session, the city manager and the city human resources manager were present. The city human resources manager reported to the city council on the results of an evaluation conducted of the city manager that included all employees and employees identified as leaders. After that report, the human resources manager left the meeting. The city manager responded to questions from the council on his management of the city, priorities for the past and coming year, and time spent with employees, in addition to other questions. The council discussed with the city manager the council's evaluation of his performance and job responsibilities, and the city manager then left the meeting. The city council continued to discuss the performance of the city manager, and the council determined that the performance of the city manager was excellent across all areas and that they were very pleased with his performance. The council discussed what the mayor's, pardon me, the council discussed what the city manager's performance of the last year meant in terms of an adjustment to salary, and the council left for action at this meeting, adjustment to the city manager's salary. So that's a report on what happened in the closed session, and we are going to deal with the motion on the salary at our next meeting. But overall, we are very pleased with your performance, and for the students in the audience, the city manager is the only employee that the city council hires or fires, so he's the only one that we're responsible for.
You're so good.
We prefer hire. With those excellent results, it's going to be, keep you on. The last thing I want to report on is that we had decided to participate in a Hennepin County program called the Step to It Challenge, and it's really a program to try to get people to increase their level of physical activity a little bit more than they have been doing, kind of in an effort to increase people's health situation and also to combat some obesity. So we're participating in this program. It started May 1st. You can go to Step to It, if you do a search on Step to It, Hennepin County, you can come to their website, you can register on the website, and you can keep track of your exercise log, all on the basis of steps, for the rest of the month. And it's really kind of fun to do, even if you don't do exercises that include steps, such as swimming. They've figured out a way to convert the exercise you get through swimming to the equivalent of steps. So it's a fun program. It's a challenge between residents, it's a challenge between cities that participate in this program, and it's just kind of a fun thing to do in May now that we're really excited that we can get outside and get some exercise. So I'd encourage everybody to do that, and tonight might be the last date that you can sign up. I'm not quite sure because of the way you log information in. Do you know, Mr. Getchow?
Mayor, that's a good question, because I know tonight would be one of the last nights to end Week 1.
Yeah.
But in previous experience, I do know that people would come on and sign in, maybe Week 2, 3, or 4, but obviously, we wouldn't get their steps for the earlier weeks, but I'd say it's worth a try.
It's worth a try.
To see if you can still sign up.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Um, this is kind of a Mr. Lotthammer meeting tonight. We've got a whole lot from the Park and Rec Director to deal with. The first item is approval of professional services agreement with RES Specialty Pyrotechnics for the Fourth of July fireworks. Mr. Lotthammer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I saw it as just three quick items. Um, the first item being the fireworks, and, um, council members, you recall that you had asked us to restore some of the cuts that had happened to some of our events, like the Fourth of July, and you'd also asked us to enhance some of those events as well. And about a month or so ago, we came before you to tell you about specifically the Fourth of July. And, um, I think, uh, what we reported was, we're especially, um, being very successful at engaging some of our resident groups, like pickleball association, like the Lions, like the Rotary Club. But, one of the things that, uh, we can't do with our, on our own or with volunteers is fireworks, obviously a little more technical than we're trained to do. And in the past, you wouldn't have seen this, the dollar figure that we would have had in the past, um, did not require council, uh, authority for purchasing. What we asked this year was two of the premier fireworks companies, uh, providers, to give us a proposal. If we add in an additional five thousand dollars to their scope of work, what would that do? What would that look like? And it's, it's really hard to evaluate these things, so one of the things that we did is we brought them in and met with them separately and had them explain to us as best as you can. Some of the technical terms like, uh, a fuzzy whirl and, uh, you know, some of the rainbow shooters and things like that, um, are difficult, but we were able to see some of it on screen as they gave us some samples. Our, um, analysis was that the group that we've had before, RES, um, they provided good work for us before. It appeared to us that the value that they would give us would still be as good as it's been in the past, plus with an additional amount added on to make it even better. What does that mean? Um, sometimes the beauty of fireworks is kind of in the eye of the beholder, but there will be more, um, there will be more towards the end, so you'll see and hear a larger, um, and, uh, bright grand finale. And so, what we're asking for tonight is to allow us to enter into an agreement with, uh, the company for twenty-five thousand dollars towards, uh, fireworks. And again, it's a company we've had, uh, good experience with, some of our cities around us have also had good experience, so we, we believe that we will see an appreciable difference from what has been there in the past.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Aho?
Just, uh, just for the benefit of, of, uh, people listening at home and the people here, um, in the past, we've always received, uh, some private donations to help, uh, offset the cost of the, uh, of the fireworks display, and I would assume that we would, again, uh, be accepting those if, if they come in.
Yes, exactly, um, and to that purpose, we can always use more. We have different levels of sponsorship. We have some of the local businesses that have been consistent sponsors year in and year out, but certainly more would allow us to, um, contribute to other things as well as the fireworks, too. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move to approve a twenty-five thousand dollar professional services agreement with RES Specialty Pyrotechnics to provide fireworks at the Fourth of July hometown celebration at Round Lake Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Uh, the next item is approval of a professional service agreement with HGA for community center aquatics study.
Your Honor, council members, I'll just give a, a brief history of how we got here today and then tell you about the action item that's on the agenda for tonight. As you go back to two thousand and seven, when we redid the community center, expanded the community center, the one area that wasn't addressed was the pool. And as you've heard now, uh, many times, as we've had public meetings, walked you through feasibility studies, um, that has become a challenge and more antiquated, both from a challenge from users, um, and some of their preferences, and also as we run into some code issues and some aging mechanical systems. So, after the renovation, I think for sure after that, um, you as council members began to hear from constituents, whether they were the general user, whether it was more of our aging population that began using the community center even more, whether it was our local swim teams, or just people that are now coming to the community center to be more fitness swimmers. So, I think in responding to that, we, uh, went out for a feasibility study to be able to tell us what we could do, um, and what some of those costs might be to do that. And through that, we engaged a lot of the residents. Um, we've also used our new City Connect, uh, program to be able to try to use that for engagement. We had a, probably one of the most, uh, well-attended public meetings I've been, uh, at in the past, um, at the community center to talk about it. And I know that you've seen the feasibility study multiple times and have heard presentations recently as last council workshop on what would it be to potentially fund something and what are some of the funding method, methods that are available, uh, to the city. At the end of that, um, we suggested that a next step would be to take it to the architectural design and that we would be bringing that, uh, proposal back this next week. The way we arrived at this recommendation is we went out and sought, uh, proposals from architect firms that specialize in this area. Um, we received four, uh, proposals back. What we were asking those firms to do is to tell us what would be the cost to start with the master planning, the design, the construction documentation, as well as the construction observation for Phase One of the program, but also considering in how that would potentially meld to what was identified with Phase Two in the program. We received those, uh, four proposals back, and of those four proposals, they ranged in price from a high of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the low one, their base was three hundred and thirty, but as we, they also indicated quite a few alternates of services, and as we attempted to gain some understanding of what that would be, because we didn't necessarily view them as alternate services, we viewed them as what everybody else was proposing on and what we would likely need, uh, to do this work. Um, it was hard to, to determine what that actual cost from them would be, although we knew it would be substantial. So, the other two outside of that was a, a price of, uh, seven hundred and thirty thousand, and then the one we were recommending, um, is six hundred and seven, five hundred thousand. And, obviously, in professional services, price does matter, um, but when we looked to evaluate and interviewed two of the four firms, um, we really value the, the capabilities and the best fit for the project. And for us, it came down to a far and away, um, clear best fit, and that was HGA, the company that we had used, um, to do the, the feasibility study. And so, what we're recommending tonight is to work with HGA to take the next step, but not at the six hundred and seven thousand dollar mark. One of the things in talking with HGA, and I'll, I'll tell you that Victor Pichati is here with us tonight in case there's more technical questions that you might have, but one of the things that in talking, talking with Victor that we came up with as something that I think I've heard from the council, is taking some incremental steps, but getting more knowledge and more certainty along the way. And when you think about a feasibility study, that gives us a good price indication, but when you think about going to bid or prior to going to bid, that's some time away, and it's, the feasibility study is just that, an estimate of the future. What we would be looking to do is go to the master planning, so how did the two integrate with each other and the designs meld, and then going to the construction drawings. Um, and so, that, what we would recommend in, in the action item tonight, is two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. At that point, this is four months approximately from now, at that point, construction companies or construction estimating companies, uh, experts that are dealing with these types of projects and, and the current market at that time, can use those documents and can give us an even more certain price indication at that time. If we determine, if the council determines at that time, that it's still something we want to pursue, or if there needs to be modifications and changes based on an even more certain price, and prices of each one of the components that we might, um, put together as being able to be phased potentially, if at that time the council says we should continue down the road, the next step is to increase that contract and actually do what, what I more think of is that big thick spec book and more of the construction details to it, that then you actually use those documents to go out to bid. At that point, the council would still have the ability to say, start, stop, um, then we actually have real known, once you go out for bid. Backtracking one step, if after the phase we're recommending tonight, and the estimates come back and the council says, not now, not today, come see us in a year, we have the ability to incur no more cost of design until the council would determine, um, that we should move forward. So, from an incremental stage, from a getting to know even more, from dealing with some of those design issues that can affect price, like types of materials, sizes of square footage, this is what allows us to get to know those and would get to know that in about a four-month period of time, and still leave us that time, if we do elect to move forward, to be able to bid it at a good construction bidding time, so we could come back at that point and say, we know we have probably what's our best price at this time and determine from there. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Um, I do agree that we need to get some firm prices on this. I'm a little concerned, though, that we're tied into the, you know, the plan of adding on the deep water pool and then possibly going back into the zero-entry pool. And it doesn't sound like this would give us a bid on something where we keep and upgrade the current pool and then add a zero-entry pool onto the side of it, which I think might be an option, um, or even keep the other one and add both of them on in a modified way. Uh, I, I just am not comfortable with the sixteen million, especially unless we go to referendum over something like that, but I know that's down the road when we find out the amounts. But, do we have any flexibility to find out what it would cost to do some other things or some other, can we translate the costs that we'll get from this into what it might do to put the zero-entry pool onto the side instead of over the current pool? Or would we have to go all the way back and start over again if we decide, changed our mind about what we wanted?
Councilmember Nelson, I, I would say that there is a potential to do some rough estimates. However, I would suggest that as we went through the feasibility study and looked at what are some good methods to end up with, um, something that works for all potential users and addresses all of the issues, like the depth, like the code compliance, like some of the distances, um, the concept of maybe taking out one wall and adding zero depth into the current pool, um, really only addresses one or two of probably a dozen to fifteen issues that, that we need to address. Um, so, i- it isn't something that I would recommend as a, as a long-term plan, and as we looked at this as kind of what is it best for the next thirty years, I think our recommendation would be is if we would only do half, is you still do the Phase One and you achieve many of the, um, solutions that were identified in the feasibility study, and then you would likely warm up the, uh, Phase Two or the current pool that you have. Certainly, that is not helpful for some accessibility, it's not helpful for some of our younger, um, and, and aging, uh, participants. And it also, um, if, if all you're doing is addressing the current pool inside of that footprint, um, you're really also taking swimming off the table for at least a year's construction time. Um, so, just from a project phasing and the need for total size, you can't push very far out towards the south in order to achieve everything right straight out of that, of the one box that currently sits. Um, it's, it's a major demo, um, to the inside of that pool, and, and you're, you're still not achieving many of the, um, desired for fitness, swimming, uh, for older kids swimming, for, um, you know, colder water use, and to be able to separate and have two distinct water temperatures. So, um, you know, I could certainly refresh, um, some of the benefits, uh, you know, with you of, of, uh, what this, what currently is there for difficulties and what this process would solve.
I, I still believe that the groups were serving the least for pool use, or for younger children, beginning swimmers, you know, maybe up through the mid-grade school area that need a little warmer pool, for seniors that need the exercise, and for any family use where they want a variety of ages of children, and I think that requires a totally separate pool, not just a new end unto the one. But, Anna needs to be inside, obviously, we've just proved that we sometimes don't get much summer, spring, and fall. Um, but, the current pool, I know, has some disadvantages, but we've also got the old point pool, and there's some other things. Um, I'm just looking at some way to try to have some options to that sixteen million dollars, and, or else to have something very clear that this is the only way to go to take to referendum.
Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, I think I might have a little bit of a divergent view from Councilmember Nelson. Um, I think that one of the things that we've been doing over the past few months is really collecting viewpoints and ideas, um, from a variety of residents and a variety of pool users. Um, so, I really believe that we should, um, at some point, and I think this is the point, um, move ahead to the next step. I really think there is, uh, benefit in this current phased approach, uh, starting with this master plan. Uh, the other thing is I have a great deal of confidence in, um, HGA. I think they're an excellent design firm and, um, architectural firm, and I think that they will work closely in this role with staff and the parks commissioner, commissioners to develop specifications, um, and this sort of feasibility study. I do have, so I'm very confident, I think that we need to move forward with this, the next step, so this master plan stage. I do have one question, um, I would like to, um, ask, and that is the construction administration. I know that we had forty percent was for the master plan, and then forty percent was for the construction documentation, um, and then there was a twenty percent for construction administration. Um, so, I just wanted to know, is that standard, uh, kind of a cost? Is that, could you give me some more information about that, please?
Absolutely, and, um, that is, um, as the other firms also broke down some of the, the phasing of their work program, um, the way that, uh, we broke it out here, and actually, the master planning part is a, is a smaller portion, um, got some scribbled notes that'll help me here, but the master planning is, is really kind of re-distilling that feasibility study and talking about how do the two, Phase One, Phase Two potentially have to consider each other when you would ultimately build both, if you were to ultimately build both. So, that is five percent of the forty that is up on the table tonight. The other thirty-five percent is the design piece, and that's the piece that I like to think of as the big role of documents, that we're, we're starting to make some of those dimensional decisions, they're sketching it out, um, it's also making some material, but it isn't to the phase yet where it would be ready to go into contractors' hands to say, you're going to build this. Um, and so, that's the, another forty percent that you would go to. And then, once you bid it and actually build it, there's some of the bidding administration as well as the construction administration, and so that breaks out into the other twenty percent that you would, um, gain their services over time.
That's clear, thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
Well, this is a, a very important topic to our community, as we all realize, and I think, you know, we've, we've been, uh, looking at our needs as a community for, for quite a number of years, and, and our current facility hasn't met the needs of, of much of our community for the last ten years with it being declassified as a competitive, uh, swim pool and, and being the only high school pool that we have, since our high schoolers don't have a pool, uh, it's, it's pretty important, uh, to the high school community as well. And I, I think we've had a really good process to date, I think we've had a lot of input for residents, and I thank, thank them, everyone, for their input. We've had emails, phone calls, personal conversations, web input, just all kinds of opportunities with the task force, with the, um, you know, looking at, uh, at developing this plan, uh, the feasibility study. I think we need, we need good data to make good decisions, and without good data, we can't make good decisions. And I think the only way you get to a real decision point where you know what you're doing is if you have more data, and the only way we can get that data is if we, if we go to this design phase and really get some hard figures. I do think we still need more input, uh, I don't think we need to just take the, uh, take the plan as put... I don't think we need to just take the, take the plan as put together in the feasibility study and move forward with it. I think we need the opportunity to have other people look at that, have more input, and have more opportunity to revisit it. I don't think it needs to be a terribly long process, because I know we do have some timelines, but I think, I think we can open it up again. And I see this as a very transparent process. I think we've tried to make it open to the public. We've solicited input in any way possible throughout the entire process, and I see that we have many points of decision-making ahead of us yet. So it's, even if we take this step tonight, we're not moving forward with the project in completion, we're just taking that next step. And I think that this next step is a critical juncture point, and I think we do need to do that. And the only question I guess I had is just, you know, we've got that four-month, that four-month start, how much time do you think we have for, to get public input before we really can, you know, start that?
Yeah, and that is certainly something that we contemplate right away in the master planning process. And as you mentioned to Councilmember Aho, the feasibility study is just that. And Mr. Pichati has said that in public meetings before, too, in their design process. This is still the time, and these next couple of months are still the time to be able to engage people. In fact, as I talked to the high school athletic, assistant athletic director about a week ago, and talked about, you know, have your coaches start thinking about what is it from a coach's perspective? And we've heard from residents' perspective, and, you know, we've got people on site that are working with mechanical pieces of different pools and have had experience. So there's many, many viewpoints, disciplines to bring to the table, and that's a big decision of, we know what the site will kind of hold, we know what some of our site boundaries, but there's still some, some critical design decisions to be made along the way. And in addition to that, you know, we joked last night a little bit with the Parks Commission that how long has this been on, an old business item on their agenda, and how long might it be on as old business? And so it is something that they, as a commission, are very, have been very excited to work on, to be involved in. And I know that if we need to spend some time outside of their normal meetings, that we will be able to do that. And I think to lend you some additional comfort, and especially to Councilmember Nelson's point, a lot of the times, you know, we've seen in the local paper, the headline, the biggest font is the 1-6, you know, 16 million. And certainly, that is an estimate that if we were to, you know, take to fruition what's in the feasibility study, that's what a contractor would, to our best guess, would likely, best estimate, would likely tell us that it takes to do that. However, if you scale this down a little bit, remember back to Round Lake and what we've done there recently. I think there were at least five alternates there, and we made some decisions to take those. But when they came back, we could tell you exactly what it was for the building, exactly what it was for the pavilion, what it was for the play area, what it was for the base of the project. And we made some decisions, not just, should we do the whole part or not? We know that in this project, there are decisions like the deeper area potentially, if you just take the feasibility study as an example. There's in a second phase, there's the water slide. Some of those lend themselves to, maybe not now, maybe not ever, when we really look at what that pricing is, where you feel comfortable at that time. They also lend themselves in some alternates that we would likely take a look at, just in material types. Maybe we have to look at the type of tile or finish that is around the pool deck, which is a pretty big expanse in pools, that can have a pretty good cost driver to it. And so having some of those things as alternates, I also think, always gives us some of those decisions. If we are determined or make the decision to take it to bidding, I believe we would suggest a package that also gave us some of those decisions within the bidding package, too.
That's good. Just a couple more quick comments. For those who haven't heard, and I don't know how you haven't heard at this point, but the option is to not, there's no option to do nothing. Our current situation is that we have to do something with this pool because of mechanical issues, because of code issues, just because of the age of the facility, 30-plus years old, you have to do some maintenance. And if we do that just to keep it open as is, that's going to cost us a significant amount of money. And do we invest in that, that significant amount of money just to keep it as it is and not really meeting our needs? You know, that maybe that's the decision we come to, but until we really gather all the facts, we don't know what we're going to do, so.
Thank you. Good points. And again, all we're doing today is authorizing the award of professional services agreement for the design and the architectural services, not determining funding or the scope of the project. So, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to award professional services agreement for design and architectural services for the Community Center Aquatics Project to Hamill Green and Abramson, Inc., HGA, and authorize 40% of design scope in the amount of $243,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The final item is authorizing a contract with Northern Educate. Mr. Lotthammer.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, this is fairly unique, so I wanted to tell you a little bit about this, but there is a group called Northern Educate, and they are a learning academy. And they're becoming more popular in locations around the Twin Cities, but last year, they were in their initial location at Eagan, at their community center and at their ice sheet. They're looking at a couple other locations around the community. And just so you better understand what this looks like is, it models a school year, it's not a school. However, the kids that are involved in this academy belong to or are registered with one of multiple charter, online charter schools of their choosing. And so the way the day shakes out for them, they come in the morning, half of their group does on-ice training, the other, and they also do some dryland fitness training, the other group is in a classroom setting, working with tutors, and they are being assisted by those tutors with academic assistance. And then the day flips, and so if you did on-ice in the morning, you do academic in the afternoon and vice versa. What this does for us as a community center in an ice arena is, that is time, especially when you have three sheets of ice, that is what we would call very shoulder and low demand time for all three sheets of ice. And so we're able to sell ice time and have them in our facility. We'll tell you that Wendy Sevenick and Bob Lanzi have done a thorough amount of research and due diligence with this group. And when you look at our packet and what the contract states, there's some really tight boundaries, because what's just important to us is being able to help our revenue picture at the community center, is to not impact the other groups in a negative way that are there. This group is fairly disassociated in the, in the far side of the facility from some of our other daytime groups, and it doesn't appear that there will be much, if any, conflict or interaction amongst the other groups that are there with them. They'll be very self-contained. We've put a cap on the number of a total of 60 max at this point, until we are to better understand that it doesn't have any type of a negative impact to it. So we're bringing this before you because it is a contract that will result in a large sum of additional revenue for the community center and would ask to be authorized to enter into this agreement with this organization.
A couple of questions. Mr. Lotthammer, where does this organization's funding come from? Does it come from the parents of the students that are enrolled in the program? And then the second question is, will these be Eden Prairie students?
Yeah, so to your first question, Your Honor, they pay a fee to be a part of the academy. That does not include anything for their fee to the charter. That's a separate scenario that the parents would have to make decisions about, but their fee is to the academy. The academy does not give them any type of academic certification. They are simply there to help them and guide them with their education, as well as they also have trained people to help them with their hockey or soccer or lacrosse skills. Those are the three sport areas that they work with the kids on. And then your second question, will you repeat, sorry?
Eden Prairie resident.
Oh, one of the first meetings that we had with the organization was with a gentleman from Eden Prairie that had a son that was traveling over to Eagan. And as they were telling us, as they had many people that were over in the southwest area, including Eden Prairie residents, that were having to travel to Eagan, and part of that was the driver for them to look into a location in the southwest metro. So I think in addition to Eden Prairie boys and girls, and I should tell you this is K-12, most of the students are in that junior high age range, but they will serve all age ranges. I think you would likely see people from, you know, our more immediate geographical area.
Thank you. Councilmember Case, or Councilmember Nelson.
This is an ice sheet that would be an ice sheet during this time period and wouldn't be turned off, I take that, take it?
Yeah, that's correct. For most of the school year, we have all three sheets of ice up. And even when at the, when we get towards spring and the major hockey seasons are over, we generally still have two sheets up because we need it for that prime time. That's, that's in the highest amount of demand. But this would not displace any other groups, you know, that during the school day, aside from some physical education, aside from some open skating specialty, which we can handle on one sheet of ice, this is, this is time that would not be used during the school day.
So what you're saying is that there's not a whole lot of downside and mostly profit for this?
Exactly. You know, we have some extra costs of cleaning, most likely. We have some extra cost of a couple more trips around with a Zamboni, and so there will be a little bit of additional maintenance costs that we would plan for. We also made sure that when we were looking at the pricing, that these are 60 people that are opening doors, taking a shower, using a room, using tables that we set up and take down. So we want to be cognizant that there is additional wear and tear and that things may wear out a little bit sooner. On that end, we factored in some damage deposits, and if sheets of plexiglass on the, on the ice are breaking, I think we're giving them two, just as normal wear and tear. After that, they pay directly for those. So I think at this point, we feel very comfortable that this is a financial benefit for us. Might we renegotiate this if it were to go on another year? And I don't know that we would look to go any lower. We might, through experience, come back and ask for more dollars.
But there's no chance that we're going to end up with more costs than we're getting in from them? And the amount we're getting in from them is going to be significant enough to overcome the hassle factor?
Absolutely. If anything, what we learn might, might add to a little bit. The dollars we would ask in the future could add to what we learned to be a little more of the hassle factor, but we have, you know, both Wendy and Bob were over at Eagan, walked their facility, understood the movement of the groups, talked to their manager of the arena. I had a conversation with their Parks and Recreation Director. And based on what we know and also based on what our city attorney helped us write into the contract, there's things in these contracts that you generally wouldn't see in some of our others that really set up some of those parameters of use. So we wanted, and the group, Northern Educate, was glad to have that, too. They're actually wanting to use that as somewhat of a boilerplate in their other facilities so that there is a very clear understanding of who gets to use what, when, where you can be. We have diagrams and schematics of the facility that outline exactly what is theirs to use and when they can use it, because we do want to be protective of the many other groups that are there during that time of the day.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
You answered my question, I think. I just want to underscore, or have you underscore, that in terms of any impacts whatsoever on an Eden Prairie resident, that you feel anybody walking in that wants, you know, walk-on-ice time, there's another, there's another opportunity for that, impacts in locker rooms, you just feel that there's really zero impact potential on a current Eden Prairie user?
We really believe so with that flexibility during the day. If this went till four in the afternoon, or if they were asking this to be when kids got out of school, do it from three to eight or something like that, where it's a couple hours of training, a couple hours of homework assistance, we wouldn't have even started to talk to them, because all three sheets of ice are very, very busy, but...
Really does sound like a win-win.
It does.
It is, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize staff to enter into a non-prime-time ice and room rental contract with Northern Educate Academy for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we have an add-on item from our Director of Public Works, Robert Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am here tonight to present an order of repair for a private property located on the southern boundary of Eden Prairie, and it's a property at 11157 Blue Stem Lane. And they're a property that overlook Purgatory Creek below. It's an elevation difference of about 70 feet from the top of the lot, where the home is, to the creek elevation. And they have a very significant slope on the backside of their property. And we've actually been keeping a very close eye on this property for the past year or even longer, because we've, we've known this erosion matter has existed for quite a while. And we've been trying to work with the property owners to resolve that. We do feel at this point in time that this is a private matter, but here recently, within the last month, the property owner contacted us and, and really noticed a major movement of soil in their backyard, to the point where there was concern on their behalf and on our behalf that there might be some stability issues with their retaining wall, their Four Seasons porch, and possibly their home. So once we were on site, and I have, I do have a photo here that would demonstrate, there we go, demonstrates what we saw about a month ago when we visited the site. And this is standing right here on their retaining wall. About 20 feet behind me would be the home itself, so very close proximity to the retaining wall. And you can see, this is the area of slope erosion, slope instability issue, and just, just out of sight, right over here is the creek itself. So in fact, you could see that that morning we were out there, there'd been some additional erosion that had occurred. And so we quickly teamed up with Wink Associates to review the conditions out there. Do we, one, have a safety issue? What are the safety factors for the structures that are on site? And then, two, what's the fix? How do we resolve this matter? And so Wink quickly went on site. This is a picture of, you know, the opposite angle, looking from the creek upward. Shortly after we contacted them, they did their analysis, and they found that, and this is the area of the slope failure. So you can see the creek is roughly down here at this location. This is where the slope failure is occurring. This is the retaining wall, the Four Seasons porch, and then the home is just right behind it. So they did evaluate that, and they found that the safety factors for those structures, the wall, the Four Seasons porch, and the home, had deteriorated significantly, almost to the point of imminent failure of the deck or Four Seasons porch. And so it's something that we need to really act fast on. We have since been working with the property owner. They need our assistance. They need somebody to step in, engineer, and manage the construction of this, and they've been willing to work with us to have that accomplished. And this is just a cross-section of what the property looks like as well. So again, you have the building here, you have a Four Seasons porch right here, the footing is noted, you have a retaining wall in this location, and this is where the slope failure is occurring, so...
Where's the property line on that? Can you show us?
I certainly can. The property line is down here.
So that's all their, their property?
It is. It's all on their property, and one of the primary sources of the erosion is groundwater that's actually moving underneath the home and is trapped between a layer of soil that it can't permeate through, and it's finding the path of least resistance, which is right here. And what's really happening is that soil saturates. It gets too heavy for the ground below it to support it. It sloughs off. Then, a few months later, the soil behind there gets saturated and sloughs off. It's just slowly eating its way back to the home. And so we have a recommended fix that Wink has put together here within the last month. It requires some soil anchoring, installation of riprap, and then revegetating that surface. Right now, it's a bare surface, and every time it rains or snows, it just gets a little bit worse. And so this is the fix that's being recommended. Tonight before you is a resolution ordering the repair. And to follow state statute, there's a very prescribed process for a city to go on to private property to remove a hazard. That's what this is. We're following that process by putting together this resolution ordering the repair. It'd give the property owner 20 days to either make the repair or to respond to the city and say, "You guys have our authorization to go on-site and fix it." So we will do that. If this is approved tonight, we'll work with the property owner to move this as... If this is approved tonight, we'll work with the property owner to move this as expeditiously as we can. We've been talking with contractors. We have them ready to go. We have prices somewhat established, so we could act on this fairly quickly. But to follow that state statute process for doing this project, we would first need to start with this order of repair. So, we would be back at a future date, once the repairs are made. We know what the final costs are, to talk about levying an assessment against the property. Now, this order, and, and working with our, with the property owners, they will reserve the right to object to that assessment. I suspect that they probably will, so we will have this conversation on who pays for it at a later date. But I think we can all agree that somebody needs to make the repair now, and they'd like the city to step in and do that, and this order would allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mr., or, yeah, Mr. Case.
Well, we do have to move on this this evening, and I have been down to the property, not this season, but I think about a year ago, and, and it's, it was bad then, but... And I would like to learn a lot more as we go through the process of who pays, to learn about neighbors, to learn about any of the erosion impacts that are on city property and any of the concomitant impacts up the slope. But there's no question that tonight, for this, and, and this owner wants us to do this, that tonight, we need to move on this, and then we'll confront the who pays discussion at a later date.
Mr. Aho, did you want to?
I was just gonna, just talk a little bit, find out about how we, how we structure this. If, I mean, does it sound like the, the property owner wants to move on it themselves and, and handle it once we've given them the, the fix? Or do they want us to manage the whole process? Do we know?
I think they would feel more comfortable if the city were to handle it. I think we have the ability and the flexibility to be on-site. These individuals have private lives. This will be a somewhat involved project that's gonna take some time, and I think that they would prefer that, that we manage the construction of the project.
I guess what I would like to see is some commitment from them that they'd be willing to allow us to levy, levy them, you know, the property for the, for the fix if they are asking us to perform the fix.
I think we have a right at any point to do that. I understand what you're saying, that you'd like to get a handshake kind of deal, or at least a perception, but we have that right anyway. It's not like we're losing any of our control or our rights. We will always retain that. So, the conversation of whether, and we've done, and we've done this before in certain situations, rarely, but where we decide as a city that it's appropriate that we would be involved. And, and that may be this case where we have that conversation. And maybe after all the details come on and we really learn truly that the city land had no impacts or effects, then, then we, as a council, let things stand and we go ahead and assess. And we, we have all kinds of opportunity to make it comfortable for this family in terms of thirty-year deferrals and, and, or, I don't know how, the language, but the, they, they wouldn't get hit with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill.
Right.
And, and we, we need to also learn a little bit more about what are the impacts on neighbors? And is this an issue that we're going to not complicate at all? We're not gonna do that, but we're gonna be maybe coming back to this in next year, year after that, going down the line on either side, in which case then, maybe there is some kind of a street assessment piece. There just, there just needs to be that conversation, but we gotta get this fixed now.
I agree.
I agree, we need to. But if you look at, I'm just looking at the, you know, at the map on this, and you look at, almost all those homes look like they're probably gonna be in fairly similar positions because they're all on that, on that very steep slope. And so, it may be a bigger issue than just one property, but I agree, we do need to take action now. And I'm glad that they're willing to let us work and, and do the, do the fix.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I'd like to see us assess, you know, what we think is gonna happen in the future. The one thing, one question I have is, we're absolutely positive that this is gonna fix it, right? From what we have, we're not gonna get in this situation where we do what's recommended and then discover that it, in fact, doesn't fix it, and getting into that kind of a legal mess.
Well, I, I think that we feel confident in this fix. We've worked with this engineering firm in the past. They, they tend to specialize in these types of projects. They have a lot of experience. I look at the recommendation, it makes sense to me. Really, it's managing the groundwater flow. That's what we're really trying to do. You can't control it, but you can try to manage it. I think this recommendation does that, and I think that it's the best option out there for resolving the matter.
Good.
Okay, would somebody make a motion?
I would move that we adopt the resolution ordering the repair or removal of hazardous conditions located at 11157 Blue Stem Lane.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else to bring before the council?
Move adjournment?
Second. Meeting adjourned.